I'd like to call the regular open meeting of the school committee of June 12th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. We are, I'd like to go right into the approval of the minutes from the May 15, 2017 school committee meeting.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. We have, you want to go right into personnel?
Um, or we can-
Or do you want to do-
Whatever you want.
Let's do recognitions first.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Alright. Um, I would introduce you, but I would only embarrass myself with your name.
That's quite alright. Is this, uh, is this okay?
We have a meeting that we had for-
Yes, thank you for being here.
Um, I wish to thank the members of the school committee and superintendent Dr. Oakley for having us here this evening where we will present a certificate of recognition to students who made it into the regional level and a few of them all the way into the state level competitions for National History Day. This year's theme was taking a stand. It is so applicable to history in that it allows our students to research and to present on people or groups who held convictions and who took steps often against overwhelming challenges to make things right. They are remembered because they had an impact on history, inspiring others to follow them and moving towards positive change. And this in part is why we study history, to learn from those who were proactive in the face of adversity and to learn that taking a stand also requires courage. Courage to be the difference. So this award we are presenting to you this evening is in recognition of the great work that you have achieved in the area of National History Day. But it also serves as a reminder to each of you to continue your best efforts towards making positive difference and wishing each of you your best courage along the way. At this time, I'd like to call up students for their award individually, no particular order, for advancing in this round to the regional level of the 2017 National History Day competition. It is my pleasure to call up Elizabeth Williams. So we'll put that to the back and make sure that she gets it, receives it. Drew Clancy. Well done. Emma Spooner. Devin McCarthy. Connor McCarthy. Jenna Slasher. Jonah Slasher. Jack Shea. Allison Adams. Allison emailed me, so I'm gonna take hers and give it to Mr., uh, Mr. Despereaux. Nick Spooner. Nicole Shula. At this time, I'd like to call up students for their award. These, this next set of students advanced not only to the regional, but they went beyond. They went all the way to the state level competition. Joshua Pollan. Joshua, we'll, we'll give you your sisters too and you can take hers home.
Congratulations.
Emma Redlinsky. And Colleen Daly. I want to take a moment to thank Kim La Croix for putting these certificates together for us. To our student participants, we encourage you to keep on, keeping on with the research and the fine work that you've done. To their teachers who inspired them and who worked alongside with them. To the parents for your encouragement and for you driving them countless hours to and from these competitions. And to our student participants. We wish them the, the best and we also are very appreciative of them representing Wild Cat pride so well. Thank you.
So all that you guys have written about history, I'm gonna take a brief recess so you guys can go out and continue to make history for us in West Bridgewater. And thank you for all of your hard work. We're so very proud of you guys. We'll just pull it out. Thank you.
Careful.
Alright, so without further ado, I'll call our meeting back to order and we'll skip back up to Personnel for Central Office, um, oh, we should just skip this in general, but okay. Central Office resignation.
Yeah, Personnel, we have, um, as you know, we have a Central Office resignation, Dr. Hope Hanscom, who, um, is moving on to be the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction for the Mashpee Public Schools. You know, Hope's been with us for eight years, so she's been making that long commute from the cave for eight years and, um, this was kind of a no-brainer for her. Not only is it, um, really, um, moving up the ladder, but also it's five minutes from her house, so it, it makes sense. And, um, but honestly, um, the last eight years, she came into a system that if you can, you can measure special education because it gets audited specifically through the coordinated program review and that happens, um, every five years, every six years. So, um, she kinda came in on the heels of a CPR audit that we had done and had to implement a lot of the recommendations that took place and then did her own CPR audit as the sped director and if you take both of the reports and look at it, you could see that she really worked to make it a great system and she's leaving us in great shape because from the number of recommendations the first time to the very limited number of recommendations that weren't even, you know, tough recommendations and maybe some of the things we don't even agree with, but you know, the state says you have to do them, um, more paperwork type things, she's made a huge difference from when she started. So I truly believe that if you can leave a place or a position, a program better than when you found it, then you've done a good job and Hope has certainly done that for the Special Ed Department in West Bridgewater. She'll definitely be missed by all of us and even Jim. Jim doesn't, doesn't want to admit it, but he'll, he'll even miss her.
We're gonna meet halfway, aren't we?
Oh yeah, we've got a place in Marion.
We have a place. We have a place. Don't give out the secret.
But, um, so she's gonna be staying on until July 30th and, um, we will definitely miss her because she, like I said, you know, the main thing isn't to be serious, she did leave the Special Ed Department in much better shape than when she found it, but also has become a good friend to all of us and just is a good person and makes us laugh and all that stuff. So on a personal, on a personal note, we'll really miss that even more. So, um, I don't know if anyone wants to say anything, but-
I wish her the best of luck and I do hope that she does keep in touch with all of us, not just me. You can harass me anytime, but make sure you keep in touch with all of us. We're gonna miss you. It's been fun.
Yeah.
I think Dr. Oakley just said it briefly, but I think we all know Hope to be almost a better person than she was a sped director, so that's saying a lot. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure to work with you even, I mean, on the school committee level, with, through my, my own personal experiences with my students and my children and it's been great. We're gonna be very missed and every time I hear the word "Hope" I think of you and it's so fitting, so thank you so much and we wish you the best of luck. I wish you the best of luck and Mashpee, they're really lucky to have you and I'm so excited for your family. It's such a great opportunity.
Well, they took everything that I was gonna say. Kidding. I, I just, I'm gonna miss your guidance, I'm gonna miss your intelligence, I'm gonna miss your, um, ability to work with people and to try to do the best that you can, um, not only for the students and their families, but for the district and you have represented us impeccably, so thank you.
This sucks, you make me cry.
I just have a big old ditto to say as well. I want everyone to say you're gonna be missed very much.
Thank you. I mean, I know I'm speaking out of turn, is that okay?
No, you can say it if you want.
No, you need to come up here and say we live and give us your address.
On, on record, on the microphone.
No, I just, I can't, I, this is, first of all, I'm gonna cry, but second of all, I can't thank you all enough for being just literally the, the, um, school committee by which all school committees should be judged because it is not like this everywhere, I can just tell you that. You guys are so functional and kid-centered and really just, you trust the people you put in place and I'm so grateful for that and the families and the kids in this town are so lucky to have you guys, so thank you. I can't believe Dr. Oakley said those names.
On camera.
I know, I know it's forever now.
You caught her at a lax moment, maybe.
I can always have, I can always have that edit.
And I'm, same cellphone number, so we're starting to find you.
Okay, and, um, we have a retirement from the Howard School that it just came, we usually ask for people to put in the retirement in, by the middle of January so that we can put it into the budget and figure out, um, with retirement payoffs and sick leave buyout and all that. But, um, just recently, gosh, within a week and a half ago, I think, um, Jean Minton came to me and she wasn't sure if she was, she hadn't planned on retiring at the end of this year and it just became time. So, um, she put a lot of thought into it, had to go to MTRS to get her, make sure she had enough years and she is in fact retiring. Jean and I go way back to before she was a teacher or a Title I Director here because her kids, she lives in West Bridgewater and her kids went through school, um, in the West Bridgewater Public Schools, but she's been working for us about 20 years, started as a Title I tutor and then got the job as the, as a Grade Four teacher. She's been an instructional team leader, she's been on numerous curriculum projects. Um, when I first came back here and, and was the curriculum director, the first person to volunteer for any curriculum committee of anything we did was Jeanie Minton. Um, so she has her stamp on a lot of the excellent things that we've done in the elementary schools at the West Bridgewater Public Schools and, um, I mean, really, she was a wonderful teacher, but even more than that, just a, a great lady and, um, I know a lot of people know her because she lives in town also, but just a great, really caring person. And, um, she will definitely be greatly missed at the Howard School and that has been her home for a long time and there was a time I remember her, she would say that her husband would look at her and say, she'd work for free because she just, she exuded teaching, she just loved it so much. So, um, we'll really miss her because she was definitely a fabric, part of the West Bridgewater fabric, so great person.
Well, I wish Mrs. Minton best of luck and going in, through my own memory of having two children go through Howard, I was thinking, oh, my kids had her and, um, funny enough, they didn't, but that's how involved she was that, um, I felt like my children had her as the one of their, um, children, one of their main teachers, even though, um, my memory does not serve me correctly, but she's just always been there, which is great and always been very enthusiastic about all that goes on. So we wish her the best of luck.
So she's actually, um, she can't go until her birthday, which is September 21st, but,
Make a cameo in the fall?
Do something else for a few weeks. And that's that for Personnel right now.
Okay, that's plenty. We don't need anymore. So, we're gonna go into Superintendent's update. Dr. Oakley, will you update us on graduation?
Yeah, graduation, I mean, it was wonderful as usual. Um, I don't know if Mr. Bodwell wants to say anything, but, I mean, I can say that his graduations get better and better every year. This was the first time that we were inside for about- Eight years and it was, you know, we always dreaded being inside when we had that old building and weren't really sure what to expect in the new building, but it actually worked out really well because there's so much space and we didn't have to worry about having too many people and there were empty seats even and, and there was still a huge crowd there. The sound system was great, you could hear everything. It was, it was just, you know, a great setup, so many, oftentimes when there's that 10% chance of rain, we're like, no, we have to have it out, we have to, we can, we can rest easy a little bit more and say, you know what, it won't be bad having it inside, so we won't have to kill ourselves to go out, but it was great, the kids were great. I thought this year, all three speeches, you don't always get to, but all three speeches of the students were wonderful. Every kid got recognized for something and, um, again, it just flows and it was really nice too when they came out. In the old school, you come out, there's a hall and people had to funnel out, it took forever to get out and then they had to go out in the parking lot. Having the cafeteria and the hall and having everyone be able to take pitches and stuff, they hung around for a while and it's just one of those nights, everyone's happy, you know, everyone was smiling and everyone was happy and I know, um, Mr. Bodwell, you can say, but it was, it's a great class. And, um, it, uh, you guys were all there, it was a great ceremony as usual. So, thank you, Mr. Bodwell, for another good-
Yeah, you did a great job too with, I know there was some confusion with the tickets and being a first time, not knowing what to expect and a couple different things thrown at you at the last minute, that all worked out really well and the families-
Like all things in town, everyone worked so well together that it was all taken care of and it all worked out.
Yeah, it was great. I've heard people in town even say, I think I liked it better inside and I did have to remind them, it was awesome and obviously a great experience, but we also had some cool weather that night, so that worked with us. But on, um, you know, our park always has such a beautiful breeze too, so-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, on a, on a hot, hot night, you definitely would rather be outside, even with displacement yet, you still want to be outside.
Yeah, we have great, yeah, we have great options here, which is nice.
Athletic tournaments, just wanted to get, do an update. When we did this agenda, baseball was still in the tournament, but they did get knocked out last week, but the softball team is still in the athletic tournaments and they, um, on Saturday, won their game against Greater New Bedford, so they're the South Sectional Champions softball and we have not been that for- Thirteen or fourteen years, I think, the South Sectional.
Since the old coaches, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, but this is perfect timing because, um, a softball player is-
Yes, it is.
Just walked in.
We were just talking about you two.
We were just talking about the softball team winning the South Sectional Championship on Saturday and hopefully playing tomorrow, um, against Austin Prep for the North-South Division Title and I don't know if you'd like to tell us what your feelings were on Saturday about how that felt.
I was so happy on Saturday because that was a big, like, up in the air game and we didn't know if Ally was gonna be there and, I don't know, we all played really well and a lot of younger kids stepped up and, I don't know, I was happy with how we played.
Yeah.
Which is exciting.
It was exciting.
I hope that carries over to tomorrow.
Yeah, it was an exciting game and you're right, a lot of players are stepping up to the plate because you did lose, you know, a lot of seniors and stuff last year and it's kinda nice when you go further and it's not the team that you expected to do it with.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's more fun that way, so. So they'll be playing tomorrow, it's at 5:00, I believe, in Taunton, same place, so we luck out that way because they, they alternate every year, once it's in, it's usually Lowell when it's north and Taunton when it's south, so we luck out that it's the south year and we get to be at Taunton, um, tomorrow and then, um, go on from there. But, but honestly, getting the South Sectional, being the champions of South Sectional, especially against Greater New Bedford because they have tended to have our number in basketball, somehow we always end up playing them in basketball in tournaments and they have had our number in the past, so it felt really good to beat them in softball. Um, so that was, that was nice. And Director of Student Services, the, um, position to, um, replace, uh, Dr. Hanscom, we had an interview committee of parents, teachers, an administrator, principal, that interviewed six candidates and forwarded three finalists to my level. I interviewed all three, I checked references and I really looked at the strengths of each individual and, and it was interesting, it was three candidates, but they all were completely different. So I looked at the strengths of each candidate, kinda matched up with where we are and things that we need and what we want to focus on and, um, picked and he signed, he accepted and signed on last Friday, his name is Corey Mikulazek and he is the Assistant Special Ed Director in the Norton Public Schools right now. He will start with us July 24th, so that he and Hope will have a week to work together and go over cases and kind of get, you know, the lay of the land for a week and, um, he had great references, he, um, is definitely kid-centered and, um, definitely a relationship builder, really has great knowledge of special education policies and laws and regulations. He was the Out of District Coordinator, one of his things was Out of District Coordinator in Norton, so he understands, um, various programs. He also helped with their in-house program, so he, he has a good, um, knowledge base of that. So, um, look forward to bringing him on board and, um, as far as the leadership team goes, I know Mr. Bodwell's very happy to not be the token meal anymore, just going on a leadership team with him, so, um, but he, um, was the top pick of the interview committee and I always tell them, I don't want to know what order the, the finalists are in because I want to be able to make my own opinion, but then when all is said and done, I ask what it was and it was also the top pick of the interview committee, so that makes it a little easier and, um, I think, um, I think people will really like him and I think he'll do a lot for us, so, you know, has big shoes to fill, but I'm sure he'll do a good job.
Everyone's replacing him. He's gonna do great, I'm very excited. I'm excited to work with him for that week and he's gonna bring very exciting energy.
Good.
Thank you, thank you for all the interviews and, and, uh, Mrs. Young, thank you for serving on that committee. Under business. Oh yes, can I, um, this is Casey Willis, is our student rep and thank you for coming tonight and sorry we put you on the spot the second you walked through the door, but you did a great job.
No, it's okay. Three people told me it was at 6:30 and then I got a phone call and they're like, it was at 6:00 and I was like, oh no.
We're sorry, this is our only one we do at 6:00 during the year.
It usually is at 6:30, so make sure if you have one, it's 6:30.
Okay. Don't wait for us for a half hour.
But we'll still, we'll still put you on the spot when you walk in.
Um, are we, we're doing the Superintendent's Evaluation next or do you want, can we do the School Improvement Plans first?
You can do whatever you want because you're the chair.
Yippee, let's do the School Improvement Plans first. So, Mrs. Spencer, are we talking about, I know we received each of them, um, by, and we've had a chance to review them, so do we need to talk about them?
No, I think what you would, what you should do is, I mean, they, they presented overall at the, the night, so then you just have to do one at a time and say, okay, here's the high school one and go through that one.
Okay, great. So everyone got a chance to read and also, okay, great. So I will accept a motion to, um, approve the School Improvement Plan for the Spring Street School. Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll take a motion to accept the Roselle McDonald School Improvement Plan.
Move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. I'll take a motion to approve the Howard School School Improvement Plan. Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And the Middle Senior High School School Improvement Plan.
Moved. Second.
Any discussions? I'll just say it's discussion-
Guess they were good.
Yeah, they were all excellent, they were great and it was, um, great to see all the, you know, all the things that we've been working on, that we continue to work on and then throughout each, each one of them, there's new, new things in there too, so it's, it's moving along. So all those in favor of the Middle Senior High School?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Alright. We're doing good then. So our last thing that we have on the agenda is the Superintendent's Evaluation, so we are going to, um, we, um, so Dr. Oakley is evaluated annually by the school committee in a public form as is required by law and she's evaluated on four standards that are used throughout the Commonwealth of all superintendents of schools and I'll give it to you at the end so that you listen to us, you don't look through it. The state also requires that there are at least three goals in, um, specific categories. So we're going to present your evaluation, starting with the four standards and then your goals and at the end we'll do the summary of your evaluation. So we each independently complete an evaluation of Dr. Oakley and then combine it into one cumulative evaluation, um, of which we are presenting to you tonight. We follow the state-guided rating system that has detailed descriptions of what constitutes a rating, so there's unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And I'm pleased to report that again this year, Dr. Oakley received no ratings of unsatisfactory or needs improvement and I've never seen one of those since I've been here, so just want that to be noted. So the first standard that we're going to discuss is standard for professional culture. Professional culture includes, um, commitment to high standards. She's rated on cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision, and managing conflict. Throughout those, um, different items, she received 10 proficient and 20 exemplary. I'd like to just read some comments from that particular. "Dr. Oakley has a high standard for our school district and herself. She is excellent at bringing the best out in others and able to reflect on her own achievements while she continues to accomplish even more. Under her direction as superintendent, some of the accomplishments include an increased number of advanced placement offerings for students, adding a virtual high school component, starting the Global Citizens Program, and increasing the community service requirement. Dr. Oakley leads administrative staffs and the students themselves in developing a shared vision that prepares the kids of West Bridgewater for college and careers and guides them toward becoming responsible citizens. She is professional but down-to-earth and works well with people. She believes in her staff and fosters teamwork and excellence." This is third standard, since we're going backwards, that she is evaluated on is family and community engagement. These again have communication, family concerns, sharing responsibility, and engagement are the factors. She received two proficient and 18 exemplary in this area. Uh, Mr. Flynn, will you read a comment on this one?
Uh, yes. Family first is what comes to mind when I think of our school system. Family concerns are met head-on. Parents may not like the answers they are given, but they are the correct answers. The law is followed, answers are giving, given in an effective and efficient manner. Dr. Oakley goes above and beyond in all areas, but in communication, she has passed exemplary with her Superintendent Spotlight videos, which have included a wealth of knowledge and are extremely entertaining."
So very true. The second standard that Dr. Oakley is evaluated on is management and operations. This includes environment, human resources management- And this includes environment, human resources management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics and policies, and fiscal systems. In this area, she scored four proficient and 21 exemplary. And Mrs. Sullivan, will you read a comment, please?
Yes, thank you, would be happy to. Transparency, fiscal responsibility, and accountability. From a line-by-line analysis of the annual budget, coordinating STEM grant availability, and achieving three capital articles being approved by the Capitol Committee are just a few of Dr. Oakley's accomplishments. This evaluation is the first one since the completion of the new middle-senior high school and the athletic fields. Based on the above, Dr. Oakley continues to work hard and push for improvement and success.
The first standard that Dr. Oakley is rated on is instructional leadership, which includes curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluations, and data-informed decision-making. In this area, she received 13 proficient and 12 exemplary. Mrs. Yon, will you read?
Dr. Oakley has a vast knowledge of all topics pertaining to education. She is an effective leader and uses her knowledge to support administrators and their goal to develop well-structured lessons. This year, she worked on an initiative at the Roseell McDonald School to improve personalized instruction for students. She also worked on enhancing teacher lesson planning in order to increase student engagement at the middle-senior high school.
Thank you. She did very well in her standards. And the standards are something that all the superintendents are evaluated on in the state of Massachusetts. However, they, and they're also, superintendents of schools are required to have three goals, and Dr. Oakley has four, of course. She has an other goal. Her, the goals, the way this, the state puts the guidelines out, there needs to be a goal under professional practice, student learning, and district improvement, district improvement, excuse me. And then she has an additional one, like I said. In this area, the ratings are by expectations. Did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met, and exceeded expectations. And of course, Dr. Oakley did not receive any did not meet or some progress. As always, she's doing exceptionally. The first professional practice goal was around her visibility in the classrooms and giving feedback to building administrators through structured learning walks with individual building principals and learning rounds. She received, out of best possible score of five, a 4.8. Great job. Under student learning, she will continue to promote a district initiative to move the level of technology integration from one of using technology to enhance teaching and learning to one of using technology to transform teaching and learning. And she also received a rating of 4.8. Under district improvement, this is a two-year goal, and she will restructure all aspects of the district improvement process, including the strategic planning and school improvement planning processes, tools, and format. She received a rating of a 4.4. And under her other goals, she will facilitate a district-wide study group on the growth mindset. Discussions will be centered around Carol Dweck's book, Mindset, and will also include video clips, articles, and other resources. And she scored a 4.8 on that. In regards to your goals, we all have a little bit of a, a little bit of something, and something that was evident, and I had the pleasure of reading all the evaluations of which you'll also get them all to see, is that consistently, there are so many great things going on and you're doing such a great job. So I wanted everyone to be able to give a quick bet. So Jim, will you?
Dr. Oakley, once again this year, has shown us how much she loves the district by continuing with her hard work and perseverance, no matter what the issues may be.
Dr. Oakley routinely goes above and beyond when completing her goals.
Dr. Oakley is a true leader who engages the teachers and administration with the goal and mindset of what's best for kids from the moment she walks into the office, attends a meeting, observes and enhances instructional practices and lesson planning, performs individual and group learning walks, creates action plans, restructures the goal-setting process for school improvement plans, attends a concert or play, attends beginning-of-the-year school events, and the very many end-of-the-year events, and attends one of the very many athletic events for all our athletes.
Dr. Oakley has a strong impact on student heartening.
And Dr. Oakley is an exceptional leader and role model for the West Bridgewater schools and community. It's an honor to work with her year after year. Dr. Oakley's overall rating was exemplary. Thank you for another fantastic year. And you are the, we would like to, once again, award you, you have received the 2017 Super Superintendent Award, and are the first recipient to receive this award two years consecutively. So I'd like to say congratulations.
Hope, would you like to give it to her?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I really appreciate it. It's so good, though, like, I still have time left and, like, it's kind of hard to stay up there for a long time. So if we could just, you know, use this one for the next so many years, that would work.
It would work, but you know what's amazing is that when I look back, and actually, I made a mistake when I was, I saved over last year somehow on top of this year, so I got to redo the cumulative again, and I was amazed at, you know, yes, last year, you won the Super Superintendent Award. And you think, like, where is she going to go from there? And then the next thing you know, you have an online, I didn't even know how she did it, this online book discussion group where I'm getting all these great ideas and these people are sharing, and I'm like, how'd she come up with that? And so you do, you continue to go above and beyond and exceed expectations in all areas, and your evaluation showed that, so can't thank you enough, and we look forward to seeing what you come up with next year.
Wait till you see our welcome back video.
Exactly. That right there, the welcome back is, oh my gosh.
But, no, I appreciate it, and it makes it a lot easier working with a group of people that really got on the school committee because you truly want to make West Bridgewater the best possible place for education, and you didn't have your own agendas, and you came because you just want to make it good for all kids. And that, and I agree with what Dr. Hanscom had said, that doesn't happen everywhere. A lot of people have, you know, get on because they have one agenda, they want to do this, they want to do that. You want to do well for all kids because you believe in the West Bridgewater Public Schools. It makes my job a lot easier because of the way you people work, so I appreciate it.
Well, and I guess this is one thing I didn't know, but I would, the other thing that's amazing to us, and we all notice this when we go to meetings outside of West Bridgewater, how much of an impact you have outside of West Bridgewater also and throughout the state, and how you're recognized by other districts and the state about your, your work and, you know, your guest speaker and those things. And I can't even count the number of things that you chair, not to mention the number of committees that you're on, and how you've impacted not just our district, but other districts. And that's, that should be noted and is noted inside that binder, but...
And the only reason I'm chairing a new one next year is because, because of Mrs. Sullivan not having to do.
Our North River Collaborative, which is going to, is a great organization, but now with this new structure that, that Mrs. Sullivan was a key part of getting that through. I think we're going to see even Dr. Oakley chairing the committee, just watch out, let's see what North River has to offer for the coming year. It's going to be good, it's all good.
Thank you.
So, oh, and then our contract, we renewed the contract, and that will be, we'll have, we'll have the signed copies, we're not quite, there's a couple edits we have to make on it, but we'll get that, too.
Thank you.
Assignment of policies, we don't have any tonight, correct? Excellent. And we don't have to approve any policies either.
We need a table.
And no.
That's good, that's a good sign.
And no warrants. So, public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot, cannot be addressed during the public forum. Seeing note takers, we're going to go right into our, our calendar. So district-wide, our last day of school is June 16th, half-day. June 16th, we're having an end-of-year cookout at the Middle Senior High School Courtyard at 11:30 for all staff and teachers. Middle Senior High School, on June 14th, the middle school field day. On June 15th, grade sevens going on the Red Sox field trip. On June 15th, grade eights going to Canopy Lake Park. On June 16th, the grade nine, a grade, sorry, at 9 o'clock, the grade eight celebration. At the Howard School, today was the talent show. On June 13th is the fifth-grade picnic. On June 14th, the sixth-grade celebration with a rain date of June 15th. June 16th is the last day of school with early release. June 19th through 21st, the Let's Go program, and that's closed the week of July 4th. June 20th, the School Choice Family Tour. At the Roseell McDonald School, on June 13th, the grade three field day for grade three students all day, that'll be fun. On June 15th, the grade three farewell presentation, and the grade, that's where the grade three parents are invited to that celebration. And then on June 16th, the all-school assembly and the third-grade farewell presentation for just the students. Excellent. At Spring Street School, the June 13th, the kindergarten end-of-year celebration that's being held at the Middle Senior High School. And the June 14th, the kindergarten fun day. And our next regular scheduled meeting is for Monday, August 28th, at 6:30, right here in the Middle Senior. That's a week before we start school, huh?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're starting after Labor Day this coming year.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.